Welcome to all to the Clovis City Council meeting on February 5th, 2024. And we are having technical difficulties tonight, so there is no WebEx or audio access to tonight's meeting. So I don't know who I said that to because you're all here, you don't really need to know that, but anyway, if somebody texts you and says, "How come I can't hear?", we are having technical difficulties. And I understand the audio in this chambers might not be great either, so let us know if it's a problem and we'll just talk in our loudest voices. Before I call the meeting to order, I would like to just take a moment and remember James Halliwell. Mr. Halliwell passed away January 31st, I believe. A longtime Clovis founder, Hedrick Chevrolet started out as Halliwell Chevrolet. He, there's a nice story about him, but his dad bought the Chevy dealership in downtown Clovis in, I think my math was right, 1944 for $1,500. $1,500 and three bins of parts. And that's how it all began. They moved to Shaw Avenue, I think around 1960. So Mr. Halliwell was a longtime philanthropist in our valley and really loved his community. So if we might just take a moment to remember him and the difference he has made in our community, much of what we enjoy today are from leaders like Mr. Halliwell and his wife, Koko, who is still with us. But we honor him and remember him and have a moment of silence for his passing, please. Thank you. So with that, I will call the meeting to order and I will invite Mayor Protem Wanatua to lead us in the flag salute.
Join me in the collective allegiance to our flag. Ready? Salute.
Our flag is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John Wolf, help please.
Councilmember Bascal.
Here.
Councilmember Besseger.
Here.
Councilmember Monitua.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
And Mayor Ashbeck.
And I am here. First of our public comments, and I'm going to pretend I'm in the public, and I want to just take a moment to let you all know, it is with a very heavy heart, but a very hopeful heart for her. Next step is that Carrie Shaw is leaving the city of Clovis next Friday is her last day, the 15th. Did I read that right? Something like that?
Thursday.
Thursday. Carrie has been our city clerk for the last couple of years in the city. It started as an intern and since she's leaving, I guess I can say without violating any conflict, she was a future city manager here in a decade or so. I think that was a track she was certainly on. So she has done a lot. She doesn't know that, by the way. I just said that right now. So she's incredibly talented. She has made tremendous impact in our city and I think in with John and Andy and the city manager's office and across the department directors. And she's actually mortified that she was kind of in charge of technology and like tonight that it wouldn't work is sort of like, really, are you kidding? Which I think is a sign that maybe you're not supposed to go, but we won't go there. So Carrie is going to move to Colorado with family and do some work there. So we are a better city for your work here. You've been, I've loved working with you on the mayor's breakfast and the third graders coming to City Hall was really your brainchild and everything you did was always first class. So you will really, really, really be missed. I asked John how he was going to manage that and he had this sort of blank stare, like, I don't know. So anyway, just to honor you publicly here tonight in the council chambers and to thank you on behalf of everybody who lives here and all the people that you served that you didn't even, they didn't even know what was happening, but you kept all of us on track and kept us from filing late at the outside at 4:59 last week. So anyway, we will really, really miss you and just want to thank you publicly for all that you've done for the city. Really a remarkable tenure here in your early career trajectory. So we look forward to hearing about your city manager role in Colorado in the next decade or so. So anyway, just want to honor you and embarrass you a little bit, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
You want to say anything?
No.
No. All right. Anybody else want to chime in? Plus, you're the only one who could say Blon's name. So that's actually like, that's the best part of it all. So you feel bad, you kind of left the rest of us now.
Who's going to say it correctly, guys? You know, Carrie, I've been on or serving the city as long as you've been interning and moving up and to be able to see you move in such a way is just amazing. You know, you brought diversity with competence and I think that's what we've always wanted. And so you, everything you touched and you brought diversity, not in the sense that you feel a diversity, but you welcome diversity in that when we went to all these educational conferences, you brought every single department. I think Clovis unified with the African-American student success, the Latino student success, the Asian student success. They love it when we are there because we show them truly the partnership, but also the opportunities and the careers for all those students. And then I think many of them don't even know that you are the one who spearheads all that to get the city out. And you do it so humbly and you don't look for any accolades. And what I love most about you is in our community, you would have been revered as a pioneer, a trailblazer. You don't even look for any of that. You know, you kind of just let your work speak for yourself and that is amazing. That speaks to the character and the quality of the person that you are. We're going to miss you. I'm going to miss you and you know, I will say that you make Clovis proud, but you also make a whole community, the Mon community, very proud of the success that you have. And I always brag about you when I share who you are to others in the community because even our community doesn't even know, you know, the quality or the level of in city government that you are in. So all the best to you. We're going to miss you. Thank you for doing such a great job.
And you can't leave until the technology works, so I don't know, it could be months. Just kidding. Anyone else?
Carrie and I shared a personal comment, personal conversation earlier. I just want to say that I appreciated your professionalism and I admire your courage to move out of state and start it. A lot of people don't have the confidence or the courage to do that. Congratulations and thank you.
All right. So you're stuck with us a little while longer. Carrie will be with us next week, but our next week's meeting is with the school board. So this is our last city of Clovis only meeting. All right. There are no proclamations tonight. First up is public comments. This is a chance for anybody in the audience who has an item to come before the council that is within our jurisdiction, but not on our agenda. Now is that time. Ask you to step forward and state your name and address for the record and let us hear from you.
Malcolm Gibson, 2776 Pontiac. Oops. I didn't know where it is. Malcolm Gibson, 2776 Pontiac Avenue. We've been residents here for almost seven years now and I'm here tonight to offer thanks to everyone in this room and everyone in the city's council and staff for all the good work they've done. I've been encouraging them all about those of us with hearing difficulties, not being able to hear the proceedings that go on here. And even though there's a SNAPU tonight and the system that's been installed is not working, I want you to know how much I appreciate and I'm sure others, because there's many in the community who do that, particularly those of us who've served in the military who have significant hearing loss because of that. So I thank you very much on that. I also want to thank Andy Hauser because I mentioned also that on the, when they repaved the section between Temperance and Ashland on Bullard, they must have taken down the speed limit sign and Google had it show up as 55 miles an hour and most people took full advantage of that. And Andy just said, tonight he made a call. Expected him to be out there putting it up himself, but he didn't do that. But there is a sign up there now at 4:45 and I appreciate that. And I also just want to appreciate, my appreciations to the city staff for putting up with this old curmudgeon and his little complaints, especially Andy, but most especially Carrie. And I hope nothing that I've done has prompted you to do that. So I apologize for that if it is, but I do want to thank you all very much. And I also thank you for allowing me to speak at these meetings. Clovis is important to us. We did a lot of research when we picked Clovis and we came here. So it wasn't an idle decision or an accidental decision. And so we do care about the community and so I hope the comments I make at least have some impact and I will continue them. So I'm more to you now and I hope I won't chase away any more people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Other public comments.
My name is San Wanakantu.
Would you mind lowering the microphone a little bit? You're a little shorter than Mr. Gibson.
Thank you. My name is San Wanakantu and I'm a resident here of Clovis. I don't know if it's on your agenda to speak about the work that you guys approved for Daryl's Mini Storage. So I'm here.
I don't, it's not a, it's not a public item tonight. I don't think it's on the consent calendar either. I don't know. Can you be more specific what you're asking about?
Yes. Last year, we had a meeting in here and Daryl's Mini Storage asked, I guess, for permission to make improvements on their property, which is-
Where? Which one?
Daryl's Mini Storage on Fowler and Olivia.
Okay. I got to get my GPS going.
Right off the freeway.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, my backyard is the freeway.
Okay.
My house is the one right next to Daryl's Mini Storage facility.
Okay.
And last year, you guys were seeking approval so that you could give them permission to do their work. I came to the meeting and I had complaints. I wanted to make sure that they were taken care of and you guys gave Daryl's Mini Storage the approval to proceed. But I'm here because I'm still going through the problems I complained about back then.
I can speak, I can speak to that.
Okay. Your name is Mrs. Kentu?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
She contacted staff today and I had staff take a look at it and when we're done here, I'd refer her to Renee Mathis to get some more details. But the bottom line is going to be that there's a ponding basin adjacent to her home where they're doing an expansion at Daryl's Mini Storage and they've been draining the drain and it's leaving quite a bit of silt on the sidewalk, not the sidewalks, but the drainage area in the area. So that's what her concern is about. So I was going to have Renee and Thad work with the contractors who are doing business there and see if they can minimize it.
So Renee, wave. So when you're finished here, Renee is our planning director and so she'll be able to gather and the folks to resolve it, to the city manager's comments. And I'm sorry if that sounds like what we said to you. I don't remember the previous conversation, which my memory is failing, I suppose, but I apologize for that, but I'm sorry you had to come back. So Renee and Thad is the city engineer sitting right behind her. So if you wanted to connect with them out in the foyer, they can make sure they hear what you need done and follow up on it tomorrow. Is that okay?
Well, I was promised-
I know.
-by them that they were going to do it and in fairness, you guys gave them the approval.
I know.
That's why I'm here talking to you.
I know.
Because I want to make sure that you guys fully fulfill your end and make sure I don't have to go through this again.
Totally.
Because right now, I'm having to walk through water to get to my car. My daughter, my grandkids are having to walk into it. I was told that problem was, it wasn't going to be. They were putting in this, new that. They didn't start until I think September, October. They cut that big drain in half. I was being flooded before. And so when they said you won't have to go through that, now it's half of what it was. So you can imagine the flooding, the noise from the pumps that are there and the flooding that I'm going through in the front of my yard.
Apologies that you had to come back and staff will not let that happen again?
Well, that's why I'm here. That's not good enough.
I hear you.
Because you didn't do it, I'm a taxpayer.
I hear you.
You didn't stay on top of it. They're going to try to talk to me and again, I don't know if they're going to fulfill it or not.
They are going to.
I am going through the same thing I went through then.
Yeah.
I'm more upset because the gentleman who were fixing those things for the water, which way it goes.
Yeah.
They told me, we were told by the guys in the white trucks, city guys, we have to do it this way. They don't want dirt on this side of the road, so we have to let it on your side. So they're worried about the road and the dirt and excuse my French, but the hell with me and what me and my family is having to go through.
Yeah.
I'm stressed, I'm angry, I'm frustrated.
I can hear that.
I had to walk through water yesterday to talk to the guy. And I'm telling you in here, in front of everybody, I moved two of those bags, I moved those long things over and I told that guy that was there, I said, "If you move it back, I'll move it right back again." Because they're not fulfilling their part and I'm still having to walk through this water and so are my kids and my grandkids. Because of COVID, my grandkids have to come.
Yeah. Mrs. Kentu, I'm sorry. I hear, I apologize. As I said, I'm sorry you had to come back. We will take care of it. We will take care of it for whatever, I don't know what the circumstances are, but Renee and Thad will take care of it and you won't have to-
Well, it is your job to make sure.
I understand and we will do it.
We're going to be back here.
So they will take care of it and you can come back and tell us they took care of it and if they don't take care of it, I rest assured you'll be back too.
Well, I already told you guys before when I was here, I've already talked with my lawyer. I've sent the pictures. I've discussed it. I told you then that I had a lawyer and he told me, "Go back to the meeting, complain, provide your pictures to me."
Okay.
And I shouldn't have to come back again and complain again.
No, you should not.
So I expect as a taxpayer that you are going to take care of it because it is inconveniencing me and my life and my children. I'm stressed to heck.
I understand.
And I don't like going through this. I'm 71 years old. My husband passed away, so I'm having to do this myself.
Yeah.
And I shouldn't have to be here doing this, fighting for my convenience. I pay taxes, I'm paying my mortgage, I'm doing everything I'm supposed to do. But yet I know I'm supposed to limit it to five minutes, but this is not five minutes solved.
It's, we can't solve it in five minutes, but Thad and Renee are going to meet you outside right now.
You didn't solve it last time either.
I understand.
That's why I'm here complaining.
I hear you. I hear you. So let's, let's go outside on the foyer with Renee and Thad and they will, they will, they will do whatever is required to, the best of their ability to solve this for you. And if it doesn't get solved, then you can come back or-
No, you'll be hearing from a lawyer, so don't worry.
Okay. All right. That's fair. Thank you for coming back tonight. I'm sorry you had to do that, but we'll get it taken care of.
Mayor, are you at 1596 Birch?
Sorry?
Are you at 1596 Birch?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I've lived there for, it went on over 33 years.
Thank you so much. Anyone else with a public comment? And you were taller than she was.
Yeah, I'm trying to make sure the mic is at the level. Okay. So I'm Dr. Garthree. Nice to meet you guys for the first time. I'm actually a recent transplant to the community. I was previously in LA, but it's wonderful to be here and see everybody being so welcoming to me and my family. So there were a couple of things I wanted to talk about. Firstly, I feel like-
I'm sorry, I just was trying to get the door closed so we could-
Sure.
Thank you.
So firstly, I wanted to bring up the issue that I feel we don't have, we don't have enough libraries in Clovis. I feel like we have a library here, but perhaps we can use something that's closer to another part of Clovis, maybe Clovis knee, something like that. It's nice to sit and study sometimes, get some time to kind of focus, make sense of things sometimes. It's nice to have a library that's closer to your home. I know we haven't here, but something closer north would be better. Another thing I want to bring up was we'll have an international stroke awareness day on the 5th of May and as a stroke neurologist, that's something that I would like to help out in the city with. A lot of people end up getting strokes and they present too late for us to intervene on with thrombolytic or a medicine that will make the clot dissolve. And there's other dimensions we can do too. That's something I'd like to participate in. But I do want to mention an issue that's at the forefront of my mind and it's been really tugging at my heartstrings for the past four months and that's been the ongoing humanitarian crisis in Gaza. And you know, as a physician, and I'm sure you guys probably come across this on your news channels all the time, there's been wholesale slaughter over there of kids, of adults, everyone across the board. And I'm hearing those surgeries happening without anesthesia. And it's really affecting even my day-to-day work sometimes, just passing by an operation theater or passing by some kids in the hallway. And I think about what's happening and checking to see on my phone, it's all over. It's very, very disheartening to see what's going on. And unfortunately, our tax dollars are also kind of going and funding this effort. A lot of the missiles that are going and raining down on the children there are kind of coming from our own tax dollars. And I know we as a city don't necessarily have a lot to do with what's happening there, but I do feel this is affecting us at home. I have heard personally of a nurse who got fired from her position as a neonatal ICU nurse because she had espoused concerns about what's happening in that territory and she was called an anti-Semite. And so she was removed from, from her position and she's reaching out to me to see if I can get her respite at another hospital. You know, these things are hitting us and I have a lot of friends and relatives who have been talking to me about this. It's affecting a lot of us. I am a Muslim and a lot of the people dying there are Muslim as well and that hurts us when you see these things. Over, I don't know, 200 mosques have been demolished, even three churches have been attacked by Israel. This is documented. And so I feel if we can do our, you know, even, even the smallest amount to maybe make a ceasefire happen even a little bit faster, we could save a lot of our lives and really reassure a lot of us who live here. Some of the residents actually are Palestinian, by the way, in Clovis, I found out, and I'm sure they're also going through a lot. And throughout the nation, we've been hearing about a lot of cities that have been passing resolutions, just demonstrating how their cities are resolved towards a humanitarian solution to the issue by at least calling for a ceasefire that ends killing on either side, whether it's Palestinian women, children, or Israeli soldiers as they're, you know, occupying the territory. And you know, they are our allies, but we have to at least, you know, have honest discussions with them as to how they're addressing their own crises and we're giving them blank checks in this, in this regard. So I just feel if we were to maybe pass a resolution, just advocating for a ceasefire or for humanitarian aid to enter the territory, I mean, we actually just decided to defund UNRWA. It's a UN organization that's, whose whole job, whose whole purpose is to help Palestinian refugees ever since Israel displaced 750,000 of them in 1948 when it was created. And that's actually the only organization that's getting any medical supplies, humanitarian aid, anything at all to Gaza. And now we're deciding to defund it and it's just going to make the situation worse. Infectious diseases are spreading like crazy. They don't have adequate water, they're getting malnourished. This is horrific to see and it's just festering every day and it's affecting my, my work day-to-day because I just, it affects me emotionally a lot and it's affecting a lot of the residents that I'm knowing and it's affecting the jobs as well. So you know, something is better than nothing and if we can have a resolution sometime, maybe in the next council meeting, and I'm happy to draft something and you know, talk to you guys about it, discuss this further, I think that would be really nice and really helpful.
Well, thank you for choosing Clovis. Are you at Clovis Community?
I'm actually, I'm actually working at St. Agnes right now.
I'm saying, I'm nice. Okay.
Yeah, but, but I work with them as well because when we have stroke patients and need to get transferred over, some of them were complex cases. We ended up, you know, liaisoning with our partners in Clovis.
Well, we appreciate your addition to the Valley. That's a specialized field for sure. The library question was really easy, much easier than the last question.
Sure, sure.
They're building, we're building a new library in Clovis on Clovis Avenue and Third Street.
Okay.
So that'll replace the small, sweet, outgrown library. But most people say we need another library in Clovis, but that's not quite on our plans. They're, they're built by the county, they're not a city library.
Okay.
So, but we will have a brand new one coming as soon as the county can get it built.
Perfect.
So hopefully that, that will, that will come. In terms of your international stroke awareness day, if you have a proclamation around that, you can get to the city manager's office and we can, we can do that if you wanted more than that, I'm not sure, but we could certainly do that.
Sure.
And then the third, the third, the third question is a stand on the proclamation. If you want to share that with the city manager, we would, we can weigh in whether we want to do that or not. As you, as you alluded, those are complicated questions, but I appreciate you bringing them up. Thank you for choosing the Valley as a place to deliver healthcare and thanks, thanks for choosing Clovis.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
It's my pleasure.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm much shorter than him. Yeah, he's actually my brother-in-law over there. Yeah, it's nice to meet you all. It's the first time I've came to a city council meeting.
Would you give us your name, please?
Yeah. This is, I'm Mohammed Sheikh. I'm 795 West Quincy Avenue. I've lived all my life practically since I was four years old in Clovis. I went to Dry Creek Elementary School and then after that to be canon and then I went on to UC Berkeley and now I'm 20 years old. So I've reached the time when it's maybe time to get a bit involved in what's going on at the, you know, city scale, national and international. And as of right now, like he said before me, the crisis in Gaza is almost ever-present in my life. I mean, every day my mother is like in tears, you know? We watch on the screen, there's children dying, there's horrifying things taking place and it's really, really hard to think of anything else, you know? Like I've got more involved in politics than I ever was before because of, I feel like I need to do something. You know, you feel like it urges that something terrible is happening, let me at least be able to tell myself that I tried to do something, even if I can't, you know, truly end the suffering. And every, I had many friends, I have many friends here, you know, neighbors and relatives who have their own relatives who are dying right now in Gaza. You know, I had my, a very close friend of mine in Berkeley, his whole mother's side of the family was wiped out in one airstrike. You know, like stories like this are not rare, very, very common in the Palestinian community. And as of right now, there's 27,530 dead in Gaza and of those, 11,500 children. You know, I mean, those are people who didn't get to reach the age that I've been able to reach now, you know, safe and comfortable over here in Clovis. And just for context, in Ukraine, the war that's been going on for two years, there's 500 children dead. You know, that's terrible. It's atrocious. But in Gaza, there's 11,500 and that's just in five months. It's unbelievable what's happening over there. And many would say that, you know, being a city council, the focuses would be on what's going on locally, of course. But at the same time, it stands to really, really have an impact on the people, the citizens of Clovis who are paying taxes and who care about the city, to know that they feel like they have done something, like we are taking a stand that we're saying that, you know, I recognize people who are saying that Israel has a right to defend itself, Israel has a right to exist, but if existing and defending yourself involves killing thousands of children and that doesn't mean that necessarily you're going to have less terrorist attacks occurring in the future, for all likelihood, you're probably creating more terrorists. I feel like there's no justification for that, you know? And so no matter where our stances lie on that very complicated situation, I feel like this instance is as clear as it could be. You know, children are dying and let's, as a city, make our resolve clear that we're not okay with that. You know, we want there to be a ceasefire, we want there to be, you know, safe and security, a humanitarian channel for children who are living there. And that's what I'd like to say today. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Hope you come back.
Definitely.
Anyone else with public comments?
I'm about the same height. Good evening, Mayor Ashcock and council members. My name is Leila Darwish and I'm a Palestinian-American. I'm here today because I wanted you to see me so that you could be able to put a face to the people you hear on the news. And because I wanted you to hear and see me as a human being, not just as some political game, right? I'm also a resident of the metro area and I'm a Fresno State alum, summa cum laude. I just wanted to tell you a little bit more about myself and the situation in Palestine, of course. Recently, there was a story about an elderly man in his 70s who was forced out of his home, he was sickly already. He was forced out of his home by the Israeli occupation and forced, beaten and tortured and starved and forced to kneel on his knees for hours. This story resonated with me because it happened to my father in 1967 and relatives of mine when the Israeli occupation stormed my village in 1967. My family comes from Jerusalem. And so nothing has changed, this didn't begin in October 7th, it began in 1947 and before that. The only thing that has changed is billions more of our tax dollars are being sent to the occupation and more sophisticated and destructive weapons are being tested on my people. For what crime? For being Palestinian? Being Palestinian is a crime in Palestine. And sometimes it feels that way here domestically. Very soon, I have to file my taxes knowing that I'm left with no choice but to directly contribute to the genocide with my hard-earned money. A new border security and foreign aid bill was issued today where 20 billion was issued for border security, 60 billion in additional funding for Ukraine, $14 billion in funds for the Israeli occupation. And at the very bottom, 10 billion in humanitarian aid that's split between civilians in Gaza, the West Bank and Ukraine. Our tax dollars should be allocated towards infrastructure and education and healthcare here domestically. That's what I feel is important. Dr. Martin Luther King said, "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice." And that's why I'm asking for a permanent ceasefire from you all and it's very important. I'm asking for a ceasefire because it's the moral and ethical thing to do, whether I was Palestinian or not. Because since October 7th, over 28,000 Palestinians have been killed, 12,000 of them children, where every eight minutes, a child is being killed. And 70,000s are injured. These injuries aren't just mere scrapes or bumps, they're amputees, lost limbs, punctured eyes and open shrapnel wounds. A minor injury in Gaza could be fatal. Palestinians are currently dying from starvation and famine and are resorting to camping out in cemeteries because there's no place for them to shelter.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap up if you can.
Oh, sure.
One more minute, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Of course.
This is an outright genocide to 2 million Palestinians who have no army, no navy. And you know, recently, Israel has officially been indicted by, for genocide in the international community. And right here in the United States, in Oakland, California, Joe Biden and his administration has been indicted for genocide as well. And that's why this hits home, that's why this is very personal. But I know this is happening overseas, but this is affecting me as a Palestinian and hundreds and thousands of us who live here in the metro area in Clovis, in Fresno and Madera. I find it hard for me to focus as an educator. It's hard for me to focus with friends, family, at work. I've also lost 23 pounds since this traumatic experience have happened. And lastly, I just wanted to thank you all for this opportunity and this time to speak and I'm, I'm happy to get to know you and if anybody would like to know me more, I'm here. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Anyone else of any height? Tall, short, anyone? All right, thank you for those comments. Next up is ordinances and resolutions. With respect to the approval, the reading of the title shall be deemed a motion to waive a reading of the complete resolution or ordinance. And unless there is a request by a council member that the resolution ordinance be read full, further reading shall be deemed waived by unanimous consent of the council. Next up is the consent calendar. These items are routine in nature and placed on the consent calendar. We act on them as, in one vote unless a member of the council or of the public wishes to pull an item. Anyone in the council wish to pull any of the consent calendar items? And in the audience? I'd like to just comment on item number two, so we want to pull it on just for the sake of the comment, but, so I'd like to pull up number two if we might. So seeing no other comments, I will bring it back to the council on entertaining a motion to approve items one through 10 with the exception of number two.
Mayor.
So on the dice for item number nine, there's an updated attachment, just for the record.
Thank you, I meant to say the, oh, sorry. So the new attachment for item number nine. From the flight control district. All right, with that addition to agenda item number nine, I'll go back to the question on entertaining a motion for items number one through 10 with the exception of number two and the new attachment to item number nine.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent items with the new attachment to nine with the exclusion item number two. Second.
There's a motion as second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item number two, I just want to make a comment for the record, is the report from the Fresno County EDC. And I just, I think I've said this over the years a number of times, but this report struck me in a couple of ways. Most of it, I bet every city in Fresno County got the same report. First eight, 10, 12 pages are exactly the same language. They're general, they're not specific to Clovis. And I only found two references to Clovis. And in terms of new leads, there were like three new leads and the category was all cities. So they weren't really even our leads. And then there was a page where they talked about what they've done in Clovis and they respond to inquiries, but we do that, 25 clients and nine new business leads. So I just, I wanted for the record to say again, I'm, I'm not inspired at the moment for the, I appreciate the regional work of EDC. But this report was really disappointing to me because it seemed quite boilerplate. So when the EDC folks were here not too many months ago and they'd gotten a big grant and none of the jobs were of value to Clovis, and I'm not saying that like it has to be, but they weren't sectors that we would consider an economic engine for our community. Not that we don't do better when everybody does better, I get all that. But anyway, I just wanted to raise for the record that disappointed by the work of EDC is illustrated in this report. If they can't do better and more, in addition to their broad work, directed work to Clovis, I would like us to consider the value for engaging. And I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's plenty, but I think it's worth a conversation that we just don't keep going along to go along to go along if we can get a return in a different way. That's, that's the extent of my comments. I don't know if you want to respond to that chat or anybody else wants to say anything?
Hi Mayor, members of council, my name is Chad McCallum, Economic Development Director. And this report is meant to be the quarter two report about the contract that exists between the two entities. I will give the feedback back to the EDC about the request for more specificity about their relationship with Clovis. I will say that since I've taken the role and handed before me, we work on a very close relationship with EDC. As Mayor mentioned, one of their primary goals is regional growth of the economy. They do take care of some things that we're not able to, like extensive travel outside the area where we just don't have the budget for it. Making some of those contacts which may or may not result in jobs for Clovis. I will say last week, we, we had a mix where the, the support of the EDC was very evident. They'd brought in a lot of the folks to that event and were able to engage with commercial brokers and realtors that were interested in Clovis. And we did meet with the president and CEO on another topic with a business owner in Clovis. So some of those things don't end up in the report and I'm going to encourage them to be more specific about some of the outside of the boilerplate items that I think would be more impactful. That said, I think that we should always review on whether or not our money is being spent in the best way and the taxpayer money is best supporting our economic efforts. So that's one conversation that I can have with the EDC as a whole in the coming months. So the quarter three report will hopefully be more reflective of the work that's being done.
Thank you, Chad. Any other comments?
Ever since I've gone on the council, what the mayor said is something I've seen every single year, every single quarter when we get it. And I think they come once a year to present to us. And so I am in total agreement that we should analyze what is, what does membership mean? And is it just, you're helping fund so that way they can do the regional stuff where there's really no direct ties back? That we need to analyze, see is there a benefit for us? Kind of like Cal Cities. We join, is there any direct benefit to us as in Cal Cities can come here and pave a road now? But there's certain benefits we may get, training new council members, getting onto committees that we can hear legislation and so that we're sort of more closer to it. So we get that benefit from it. And, and I think as we join the different committees, we can, as council members, can start to analyze, is there a benefit there as well for however that membership fees? And I think it's time to take a critical look and, and I think this will get some return and/or really define, no, we're on this path, Clovis, do you want to join or not? And so I think that that's important for us. So that way we can, because I look at it and I agree with the mayor, a lot of the stuff you do, we do in us already. And the, the report just changes whatever, Clovis, whatever to Fresno to Clovis in the city slot, so that way it's the same report everywhere. So I'm in congruence with the mayor to see if we can truly look at that and whenever the contract ends, give us a recommendation back so that way we can kind of go, do we renew or not?
We'll do.
Anyone else? All right, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this EDC report? Seeing now, I'll bring it back, I'll entertain a motion just for item number two on the consent calendar, please.
I'll make a motion to approve item number two on the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
There's a motion as second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chad. Item number 11 is a request to consider amending the Clovis Municipal Code, Section 2.1.32, establishing salaries of city council members and increasing the present salary to become effective after the November 2024 municipal election. Carrie, are you looking on this?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As we have an election coming up in November of this year, the first item for council consideration is an ordinance to amend the Clovis Municipal Code, which establishes the salaries of the city council members. The California Government Code, Section 36516, provides that the city council may increase their salary by 5% for each calendar year from the operative date of the last adjustment with a maximum limit that is based upon the population of the city in accordance with a specific schedule set by the state. I do want to note that recently, there was a change to the government code per SB 329, which increased the maximum amount in the salaries identified in that schedule. And these changes went into effect on January 1st of this year. As an example, one of the changes specific to Clovis, for cities up to and with a population between 75,000 and 150,000, the salary has been, the salary limit has been increased from $600 per month to up to $1,900 per month. And if council should choose to make any adjustment to their salaries at all, it would become effective after the November 2024 election, so it'll be effective in December. The city council salaries were last reviewed in 2022 prior to that last election and the council had approved a 4% increase at that time. This amount was equivalent to what city employees received over a two-year period. Staff is bringing this item back to council for consideration as the council salaries should be reviewed periodically to provide reasonable compensation for city council duties as provided by law. So the options before you tonight are up on the screen. Staff is recommending that you consider one of these options. The first option is to make no adjustment at all to the council salaries and leave it at its current rate of $1,513 per month. A second option is to increase the salary to an amount that is equal to what city employees received over a two-year period. So exactly what we did last time in 2022. The last adjustment that was made in 2022 was a 4% increase, which was equal to what city staff got over a two-year period. So in 2020, city staff received a 2% increase and in 2021, they received another 2% increase. If you decide you want to utilize this method, again, the council salary would increase by a total of 8%, which is equivalent to staff receiving a 5% increase in 2022 plus another 3% in 2023. So that would make the councils, the new council salary with that 8% increase to $1,634 per month. And lastly, the third option, per SB 329, with the new salary schedule, you can decide that you would like to increase the salaries up to 25.6% in the amount of $1,900, which is the new limit that has been authorized effective January 1st. And just to give you an idea of what other California cities that are comparable to the city of Clovis are doing regards to their council salaries, we reached out to eight different cities and provided the information in the table above. I also want to note that these are the amounts that they've had prior to SB 329 going to effect. So they may also decide that they want to change their salaries, but at this point in time, I don't believe they have gotten to that point yet. So these are amounts that are all pre SB 329. Because the salaries were last reviewed two years ago and we're ramping up to our next election, staff is recommending that council consider the options that are up on the screen for you. And this concludes my report and I'm available for any questions.
Thanks Carrie. Questions for Carrie?
Carrie, for option three, if that was moved, then it increases per what we decide or is that a set increase? I think I see it, is it by the CPI and all that? Is, how does, how does it work? Or is it by population where this, our city will be stuck at 1,900 until we get over the 175,000 people?
So the current, the salary schedule is based off of city population. And the limit, then 1,900 is our cap, so it's the maximum for cities of the population between 70 and 150,000. The CPI, the reason why we did not include that this time around is because that isn't available at this time. So it would, the options that are available for you on the screen right now are the ones that are, I suppose you could say, make any difference at all. But you, essentially, you could decide that you want to do something that is above 8% and below 25% if you wanted to.
Okay, so I want to understand option three and the, I think option two I can understand because it'll be 8% for the next two years, right? And so if we go option three and we go to that 1,900, I don't know if we'll reach over that population. So is it based on population before it can increase again or is there a set percentage that you can increase? Does that make sense? I'm trying to understand the third option.
Yeah, I'll step in, Mayor and Council. So the maximum allowed by the new law is the 1,900. So you could approve tonight or before the next election, any amount up to the 1,900. To go beyond the 1,900, which is allowed, similar to what is currently allowed. So the current schedule or the schedule before this, this change was $600 was the max for a city of the size of Clovis. However, there was- However, there was an allowance to go up more, up to 5% more each year beyond that. The council did do that for several, several times over the last couple of decades, exceeded that 600 amount. That's how you're at 1,513 now. Even though the max limit previously was 600, you can exceed that. So the new law allows you to exceed the 1,900, no more than 5% in any one year or the amount of the inflation. So there's no inflation data because the law just went into effect in January of this year. So we couldn't, we couldn't use that metric to go beyond the 1,900. I don't think we could technically go even use the 5% beyond the 1,900. So the option this year, I would say, is not to exceed the 1,900. But you could do anywhere between 1,513 and 1,900.
Okay. And let me see. So this option two, we agreed was, if I recall, we agreed with what the bargaining units or staff got the years before. Is that how it was? Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
And so what we're going to agree on today is what was already agreed upon, I guess, at last year's negotiation or something.
Correct.
Yeah, it's what staff.
Last year you got. Okay.
And just to clarify, the 1,900, if you guys want the 1,900, in two years we come back with likely an option considered, uh, up even by 10%. By five.
Any questions for staff? Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on the proposals before the council? Do nothing, do what staff did, or do 25%? And if I do, okay, then you were going to comment.
Jerry Cook, 2998 Clovis. One of the things, our company is probably one of the largest, larger taxpayers in the city of Clovis. And I think we are all very proud of the way this city is operated and of the leadership. I appreciate the bold leadership that looks after everything from clean curbs to making sure that trash is picked up twice a year after curbs, the safety of officers that are throughout the city, keeping our city safe. And all of these great attributes we have in Clovis is because of leadership. And I believe in paying for performance. And we are one of the best managed cities for sure in California. And I believe this is a small pittance, it's 400 bucks a month. It's peanuts compared to what I know the council member put in hours and hours and hours, well beyond council meeting. So as one person, I'd like to be fully in support that the $1,900 a month is the best bargain we could ever have for the kind of high-quality elected council members we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Hello, my name is Brian Wilson. I live at 469 Bergen Avenue in Clovis. I kind of agree with the gentleman just preceded me. I've got a couple of questions if I can ask, to have you answer them. Is $1,900 the lowest paid employee in Clovis right now? Or do you have people working for a month for less than $1,900? Because I think I got jobs for them at McDonald's, I'm sure.
But we all should go in and out of workers, if that's the case.
You know, you know what I'm saying? $1,900 doesn't seem like much. And I know that I was talking to Diane the other night at 8:30 in the, in the evening. So yeah, I know you're working a lot longer than that. Your hours are not on a clock. So I, I don't think, the only thing I would have to say is the 25% looks bad. You know, that's the problem. The 25% looks bad, but the 1,900 for a month is ridiculous. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Please. Have to say your name again.
Dr. Sehath Padhir again. I just would support option three.
Thank you.
I think you guys should get paid for it.
Thank you. Others? All right, we'll bring you back to the council for actual discussion. Oh, come on.
I, I appreciate the words. I think that a 25% increase would be uncalled for. I think $1,900 a month, based on the comparison to the other cities. If we compare ourselves to cities that are like size when we make these decisions on how much we pay our employees, it isn't, it, it would be inconsistent with our past practice and how we make decisions on salaries. I'm even uncomfortable with 8%. But I, I frankly would be okay with option one or option two or a hybrid at 4%. But I would definitely be against 25%. I just, people are out there suffering, making ends meet. This is not a professional job for us. We're not, we are people who, we all have had jobs or had jobs and are retired. So that's not what our function is to make this a profession. We're, we're paid volunteers pretty much. So that, that's kind of my, my thought.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in the same line as Councilmember Bessinger. I'm for option one, you know, which is none. I'm okay with us not having a pay raise right now. I mean, like you said, this is really a volunteer position in a lot of ways. And we do get other benefits and things that come along with, with being a council member. But, you know, we're not, we're not in this business to make money or, or anything of that nature, really. So that's just my thoughts. I just assume we go with no pay raises and all good.
Go on.
Yeah, the, the last time, I keep thinking, this is always bad timing. Because the last time I voted no, because we voted for it prior to the negotiations with our labor unions. And so it didn't, it just didn't, the appearance of it, even though we are going backwards in getting a percentage that was agreed upon two years ago, I just feel like you negotiate yourselves and it's easy. And then when, when it's time for the bargaining units to come forward, you know, it seems like we, we potentially can make it very difficult and/or more cumbersome than it's needed. So I, I never liked the timing of it, even though I think, I understand, Carrie, because this election's coming up. So we're priming it so that way the next council doesn't decide on their own salaries. It's sort of us deciding for the future. So I have, I understand that part of it. So because I look at this position, kind of like what Councilmember Baskin said, it's voluntary. I, I, I like what we do because we all still have a full-time job. And this is not what is supporting us. And we're doing it because we want to serve our city. And I want to keep it that way. And so I, I'm, I'm all for number one, option one only. And so no, we don't need any raises. And not only that, we also get insurance, okay, health insurance from that, dental insurance. And so that's a perk that sometimes, you know, you don't see it because you see 1,500 only. But there's that perk if you should choose it, if you don't have any other place to get insurance. So there is, there are benefits to it.
But you pay for that.
You, yes, but.
So you have access to, so added, right? You don't get free health insurance.
It's not free, but you still, you know, there's, you pay for it like an employee.
Right.
Yeah, and so it's not.
It's on a top.
It's provided, yeah, so.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm for option one.
Diane?
I mean, obviously, none of us are doing it for the pay. I do think, yeah, it's unfortunate that less than $400 a month shows up as over 25% of an increase because obviously that is not substantial in terms of the dollar amounts. I also do think as someone who has one year of experience up here that I can attest to the fact that I have put in a lot more hours than I actually anticipated. And that's certainly not a complaint. I have had a lot to learn and was happy to take meetings and learn all of the things that I was able to and really get up to speed. I do think that in the coming year in particular, and even the coming couple of years, we're going to have some very important things that are coming before the council, the general plan amendment and some other things that are incredible significance to the future of the community. And in terms of the time that we are going to be putting into that, I do think there's reason to consider that even just option two, let alone, you know, option three, would be reasonable for us to do. But I'm certainly not here to advocate for that. And I'm not hearing consensus on any of those things from my colleagues. So I'm, I'm fine with whatever anybody wants to do. Because again, we're not in it for the pay.
Thank you for the comments. But yes, this is not a role equated to dollars, that the value is not in the dollars. So I, I think that's, I think that's all correct. So I am comfortable with no raise and we can revisit in two years and see where we are. We're never going to get paid what we are worth, if that's, if you go that way. So I think we're good. We are volunteers and servants and that's it. So and I think each paycheck that I take home after I pay my insurance is like $380. So I take home pay is $760. So it's not, yeah, like that was half my Costco bill today. So, but again, this is not driven by money, it's driven by pure love. So anyway, with that, I would entertain a motion to, I think the consensus looks like option one.
I'll make a motion to approve option one on the calendar for consideration.
I'll say again.
There's a motion and second for option one, that we would not raise our salary for this two-year cycle and revisit it again in 2024. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. It did make a great media headline, though. City council, 25% pay raises. It sounded quite like, oh my gosh, what are they thinking? All right, next up is item number 12. Pardon? Yeah, 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 yeah. Item number 12 is to consider waiving the formal bidding requirements and authorize the city manager to enter into a second amendment to the agreement with Cosmont Companies for $30,000 to implement financing policy changes for development impact fees. Andy?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So just a quick recap. Cosmont's recently completed a scope of work. Just reviewed how the city calculates development impact fees and how we fund those things. They also reviewed financing mechanisms available to the city. This was presented to staff in the, in the council workshop in early January. We are proposing to hire Cosmont to review our debt policy and recommend any updates to enable alternative financing methods such as CFDs, EFIDs, and others. They would also advise staff and ultimately council on using third-party entities for debt issuance or using in-house staff. They would also develop procedures and a transition plan for the use of these financing mechanisms and then provide these in a presentation format to council for their consideration. That completes staff's report. The reason why we're asking for a waiver is because of the amount and not going out to bit for these items.
Next, any questions for Andy?
I, I just have a quick question. Is Jay good with this, with finance department? Going outside, using somebody else for giving us approval on? Maybe I'm not understanding correctly, but it says debt and.
So the, the debt policy is a document that the finance department does develop and maintain. But they'd be integrally involved in that discussion as well as third-party entities or in-house staff to do debt issuance. We have a team that helps us with those things already. And they would be advising us on how they can best efficiently do that. And finance would be a big part of that discussion.
Okay, so Cosmont is basically just going to be an advisor to direct everything out?
Yes. Yeah, we brought the debt policy a couple of years ago in best practice, as it would. And now we're looking for a little bit more expertise in the areas of the CFD to make sure that the language there matches what we're intending to do potentially as a city. Thank you.
Andy, my concern is with sort of timeline. Because I, I thought last time we talked, we're in need of these fees to be decided. So that way we're not operating again, a year behind, a year behind. So are the fees going to be delayed until this thing is studied again? Or will we get updated fees soon? So that way we get the water fee brought before us, it can be decided? Or is everything still waiting on this to be done? And then fees will be back up?
Everything's full speed ahead. This will be done in addition too. So the plan right now is to come back with a study of this being done on the water impact fee, likely in March. We're hoping to bring this item back to you in March as well. And then full impact fee analysis and updates would come back to council in May-June, which is our typical schedule.
Okay. So I, I like that. Because I think from the community, when they came out from us, it was sort of like, okay, we're doing things well. Everybody understands we need these other tools. And, but I don't want it to be delayed, so that way we are not behind. So appreciate that.
My only comment, my question is a little bit to, I don't want to piecemeal this. $30,000 here, $30,000 again. I want to make sure that we are funding the longest range, length, easy for me to say, longest range question we can imagine in what we know and working toward it. Because if we're going to keep coming back, and I know the money's actually not relevant to me at the moment. It's a very small amount of money. But that's what I'm curious about, to make sure that at the end of this $30,000, you won't come back and go, we don't really have enough to do X or Y, we need to do something else. So that's my, that's, I, I want to make sure the, the flag is planted boldly so that we really get information in here that's, could help us change the way we fund Clovis going forward. Does that make sense? Do you think 30 more thousand will get us there or do you think it's 50,000?
That is the scope that we requested of Cosmont to achieve with this $30,000. It would change our, potentially, change our debt policy that would allow for the use of tools such as CFDs and potentially others. That would set us up for the long run on how we do this. Beyond that, if CFDs are issued, those are typically on a project-by-project basis or area-by-area basis. And we may need a municipal advisor to engage on some of those more complex things. But that would, this would allow us to do that in a very efficient and thoughtful way.
Okay. And then the only thing I would, I guess I would add to the scope of work is I do think that a stakeholder advisory group would be of value to the Cosmont folks, not unlike our G-PAC that we have for land use planning. But there are some very smart, savvy business investors, developers, Mr. Cook, Spencer's, people that have a kind of a worldview of investments and development and financing that, you know, beyond what certainly I know, but probably what beyond most of what our staff is familiar with. So I would just encourage us to, I, I would kind of insist that, and it might make the scope of work cost $8,000 more. But I do think we need a stakeholder advisory group, a small, a small group of local business economists, experts to just weigh in so that we get a more personalized sort of view of the valley and of our market. So that would be my only request. It may be able to be done for the $3,000. But I would love to know how they plan to engage people that do this for a living here, that care about our community as well. So I would just, I would request that be part of their work. I didn't see that, I didn't see that delivered, though.
And we can, we can address that.
All right.
That'd be my goal as well.
Okay.
I, I agree with that also. When, when the development community was talking to us about CFDs from a municipal mindset, we're going to think of it one way. From a development mindset, it's a different mindset. And I want, at the very least, to know, have, have someone who can give us the pros and cons of each side so that if we are pushed to make a decision at some point with CFDs, Melrose, we make a decision that is based on something that we can point to.
All right. With that, I'll open the public portion, inviting anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this engagement with Cosmont. Invite you to do that now.
I'm a whole, council member volunteers, thank you very much. Generous service and donation, I feel so guilty that you're, we're picking your pocket for sure.
It's about love, Jerry, it's love, community love.
Jerry Cook, Cookland Company. Now I'm joined by Johannes Monchmore, who's in the audience with many decades of civil engineering experience, registered civil engineer and has been very.
registered civil engineer and has been very involved in a variety of this type of financing. Um, I want to echo the comments of the mayor, the mayor of Pym and other council members that we need to get moving on this. Uh, these alternative financing systems are used in other communities which help them to move forward. We see too much development going out of the area, to other counties, other areas. And without the infrastructure, we can't go forward with industry, commercial, other revenue sources. So that really is the best thing we can do to secure stability in your budget for the city. Um, I would like to particularly emphasize the importance of more jobs. You all know how important jobs and job balance is to housing. And this is an opportunity for us to get there. You've identified, identified some land in that area, land in an area that would be excellent for alternative financing to bring in more industry, more commercial, more taxpaying types of, uh, sales taxpaying companies. Certainly, uh, we as a developer, Cookland Company, would love to be at the table with you. We'd love to participate with you. We'd like to bring our expertise on this. And we would definitely, um, look forward to helping you move forward. Again, I commend the council and the management, the staff for pushing this initiative. And, uh, thank you so that we can get more economic development in Clovis. I'll turn over to my colleague from Cookland Company, has any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you. The way we're going to change the economic model is changing economics. And that will come from jobs for sure. Anyone else wishing to comment on this item, this expense, this work? Close, seeing now I'll close the public portion. The only thing I, other addition I would add, and I don't, I don't know how, how I say it. I wasn't reading the Cosmont or Cookland, but I do think that, uh, a policy analysis of prospective legislation or if this is on someone's radar at the state. Because I think I said to somebody that, somebody mentioned to me a section of a bill that was going to make CFDs more difficult and the Cal chamber was advocating for it or against it. So I just think the policy landscape around this, um, I suspect if there's, you know, that the state would be interested in these sorts of things. So just making sure that's on Cosmont's list about that landscape is best thing to check. All right, we're bringing it back to the council for, uh, action or a motion of some sort.
I would make a motion to, um, approve the waiver of formal bidding requirements and authorize the city manager to enter into a second amendment to the agreement with Cosmont Companies in the amount of 30,000. Sir?
Can, just for clarification, does your motion include the conversation on convening a stakeholder group to help inform that?
Yes.
For second?
Yes. Super important.
All right. Uh, there's a motion second, is there a session on motion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. I almost say this work is more important than the GPAC. So I think it's, I think it's super important to the city. So thank you for bringing it back. All right. Uh, next item is council, uh, item number 13. I consider approval of the council meeting scheduled, Tom?
Uh, real quickly, staff is recommending, uh, city council cancel the remaining scheduled meeting of next Monday, the 12th, and adding a meeting on Tuesday, the 13th, which would be the joint meeting with Clovis and Vassal District.
And that meeting is at 6:00 PM at the school district professional development center?
Yes, the, the actual meeting starts, but we might have a pre-meeting and all of those details on.
Okay. All right. Questions, anyone? Public comment, anyone? So no meeting next Monday, instead on Tuesday with the school board at the school board chambers. All right, no public comment. Action, please. Motion, please? To approve the council meeting schedule?
Uh, motion to approve the change of council schedule, second.
Motion second to approve the council meeting schedule for the report. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City manager comments?
Uh, real quickly, uh, earlier in the meeting, somebody mentioned how much you're going to miss Carrie Chau. You have no idea how much I'm going to miss her.
Actually, John, I retire next Friday too, just out of sheer depression.
It's the 15th, yeah. Carrie has been with your organization for eight years. She's been an incredible asset. And, uh, when, you know, one example is when the pandemic hit and we were back in the nineties of technology wise, she stepped in and did an incredible thing. And she's done that and similar things to many things in our office. Replacing her is going to be very difficult. And I want to personally thank you, Carrie, for all that you've done for the organization. And, uh, selfishly, you're going to be missed. So thank you.
Selfishly, he wants to say, please don't go. But he's not, when he said that, I just said that, please don't go. We're all good at this, for sure. Yeah. All right, council comments. Uh, Matt?
Uh, just real quick, I, uh, you know, we went to George Rogers' funeral last week. And, um, you know, it's very sad, obviously, to pursue George and pass and, and under the circumstances and everything. But, yeah, I've reached out to, uh, John Holt and the police chief. And I've had citizens that have asked me about doing a public donation to do some sort of a memorial for George at the police department for his work with you over at U Services and, uh, perhaps coming up with some ideas for something that we can do there. So, uh, just want to keep everybody informed that I have reached out to the city manager and the police chief on that and at the request of other citizens and stuff. So how we proceed forward, um, I'll work with John if everybody's okay with that. And then we can bring it back for, for discussion. But I think it'd be a, a, a great thing to do because, you know, one of the things that was mentioned at the, uh, the service was just how many people George impacted in this community. Families, uh, children, you know? I mean, he had an 85% success rate of kids not coming back into the system. And that's really unheard of in today's society for the program and the things that he was able to do and what the police department is doing. So, um, I look forward to trying to come up with something that we can commemorate in the best way possible. So that's all, yeah.
Nice. Diane?
I completely support that. And I have nothing.
Uh, Drew?
Uh, last Tuesday was my final, uh, meeting with the air board. I served two three-year terms.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I, I had to tell you that I, I enjoyed, uh, I enjoyed my service with that organization. They do great work. They were, item three on our site calendar today, uh, in that there were grants to replace highly polluting vehicles with electric vehicles. And so the, uh, I, I think the, the work done by the air board, uh, is exceptional. Uh, and the, I chaired a meeting for my replacement, which is a council member from the city of Visalia, which is the next large city in the, uh, in the rotation. So, uh, I'm done with that. I'll see what else I can pick up to fill my...
Thank you for, uh, doing that extra, for that large salary because that... Thank you, Drew. Well?
Yeah, I also attended the funeral for George. I, I first met him when, um, my daughter was still in sixth grade. You were chief and you did that, um, essay. And my daughter won. And so, yeah, and so he showed her sort of what the youth programs were. And she was just very impressed. She came back and got a chance for them to see what we did here, especially just in PB. And George was always very gracious. I loved his work with, uh, being on the committee for the Martin Luther King. Um, I know the chief supported, Chief Bassler, Chief Fleming, supported that quite a bit. But George was on the committee, uh, and doing that work and bringing that, um, breadth that's here to Clovis and, and just sort of what was said, bridging the two cities. And so I appreciate that. Thank you, John, for the notice that morning. Because I didn't know until you sent that email. So appreciated that, so we can show up. Um, we went to the transit center ribbon cutting and we went for the 25th. Yeah, 25th. And that was a very nice touching ceremony as well because it gave at least some of us younger members or less seasoned members the opportunity to hear about Harry and his influence on this city and his work in transportation. And to, to see, you know, his legacy moving and then getting the, the senator named after him. And it was just, it was a very nice Clovis-type, uh, event. Because we did it for the senior senator, which was a Smith camp family. And then we did it for Harry, which, you know, a public servant in our community for over 46 years. We also, I also attended the youth commission with, um, fellow council members. And we just have some very sharp youth members who's going to do great things. Thank you, Carrie, to Andy and Chad for leading that. And so those are open to the public. So I wanted to announce that as well, that if you want to attend and see what our youth are doing, uh, please come to those meetings. They're publicly noticed so you can kind of see what they are discussing and developing. And it was just a great chance to see how sharp they are and how forward-thinking they are with the commission. Can't wait to see what they bring up. The next meeting will be a tour of the city. So, you know, that'll be public. It'll be more difficult for public members to attend, but that's what they're going to do. Um, I wanted to congratulate our culinary center for receiving a chamber award and the stories that, you know, were shared and the success stories that our culinary center has given to, and it's not even Clovis, I mean, you can be anywhere. That's the only sort of kitchen-type incubator in the Central Valley, as was shared. And so, um, just continue doing that. We are in support of that. We've been in support of that even prior to me coming onto the council. And hopefully, we, meaning the staff, will think in more ways to help our citizens be more entrepreneurial. Um, I think the stories that were shared, this last celebration was very inspiring, very to the core of what humanity is, like elder story of West Tech and how humble, humble beginnings and now, you know, living next door or in the same neighborhood as his boss, you know, owners of Dunkin' Scraps. So those, those are the realities of discrimination that, that we have. And, and we have those stories every single day in our backyards of just humble beginnings and making a success. And even families who've been here many generations, like the cooks and who they honor, which I think we forget. I sat on the committee for, for, to bring medical schools here to the Central Valley. Ever since I've been here, the UCs have been talking about it for over 30 years to be medical school. And a private family does it in, in conjunction with the city in, in, well, five years. I don't know. Yeah, so quickly. And now we've got over 600 students there, graduating 150 medical students each and every year. Or, you know, so that, you know, Jerry, I know you recognize Florence Dunn, the, uh, what do they call her? The president of CHSU. And that's here in Clovis. And it's here in Clovis. We have the medical school here and that, that vision forced out of the council to bring that here. And now we are an educational hub and a medical hub. And for, um, for her winning the Heiner Cook Award for honoring that, I think that, that's just fabulous. So that, the whole day was, was just about close now, how great we are. So I wanted to just share that publicly. And then, um, yeah, so I, yeah, so thank you.
Are you sure? You did a good job. So I did a lot of the same things that...
Mayor, I, I, I better do the work, work.
I was saying, you have this.
I found all this stuff. Okay, yeah.
Sorry, I'm chief, but I was looking at this.
I like the community stuff, but we don't get paid enough. Okay, we went to the, uh, I went to the ICS command center training, okay? So they, it talks and Chad is there. First, I want to say Clovis, when I get there, then you realize as a public servant how aware the staff we are, of how prepared we are and how involved we are with just emergency and hazard preparedness. So Chad is our person. And you sort of, so I kept asking him, so have we done? Oh, yeah. I trained on this. Have we done it? Yes. So whenever there's a hazard, we have to be prepared. And when the mayor asked one time, what is the plan downtown? Should there be, you know, a threat? And we, we had that. That's why it was, you know, chief, you know, thank you for your work and for Chad Fitzgerald's work. And this, I think, is important for public officials to attend. So that way we don't get in the way. Because I think we mess the chart and we get there and we can go, no, Chad, you're not in charge anymore. I'm going to tell us where to put the command center and all this kind of stuff. Where I, I thought that was really telling that you can look at it and go, yeah, we better just shut up and trust our experts when a hazard happens. Because they are trained, you know, day in and day out from police to fire. And, and I think that was the intent of inviting us to this one. And it does have a section on what public officials should do. And there are, there were a lot of examples of how public officials, who have no expertise, come in and can mess things up. So, um, you know, for the public to be safe.
Matt's now is agreeing like wholeheartedly, Derek. I think that's a good read, too.
And so, yeah, I, I just wanted to share that. I think Chad has everything, but if there's a next training, we're going to try to do it again then, uh, for the other council members to attend. I went to the housing community, economic development, um, meeting. It was on Zoom. We set our priorities and it's, you know, economic development, housing development, and integrated infrastructure. Those are sort of the givens. So the ones for this year for Cal Cities, um, committees, homelessness, infrastructure, and affordable housing. Those three are sort of the ones we will tackle in our committee meetings. In our priorities, I just wanted to, it was refreshing to hear that Cal Cities has taken a more local control perspective in that, you know, in, in our language. We are saying stuff like, we want the housing element to be one in which Sacramento has less say. And then if we're doing a good job for it to be approved with less red tape. For us to approve our general plans automatically if we are meeting certain housing goals and numbers. And that type of language, I think, is, is encouraging. I don't know how much teeth it'll have, but at least as a council of all the cities, we are wanting that. And people are starting to see that Sacramento has gotten too involved in how we Zoom and how we, uh, do our business, that the cities are starting to develop policies and guidelines that are taking a firmer position on local control. So I wanted to, um, report that. We met on Friday, January 19th, um, on Zoom. I think that's the only meetings I went to. Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, just a couple of additions. The transit center was great. It was great to have Eric's family there. I have to say, when Nathan said I'm the last person up here to sort with Harry, it was a humbling moment. And I felt really lucky to have sat pretty close to her for a long time. So I think I didn't really know what that gift meant till that moment. So that was, um, personal, I appreciate that. Just to echo the youth commission, best night ever. These kids are ridiculously adorable and smart and ask good questions. And Chad had created an activity for kids and they had flip charts and divided quadrants. And one of the quadrants is what would you teach? What would your generation teach those that are not in it? And they were all great. But the one that just made me laugh was there was a group that said, we should teach you how we speak. And so they had a list of the slang words. Okay, I don't know how they made these words up, but that was pretty fun. Can't remember really any of them, couldn't use any of them in a sentence. But they were just, they were, they were so happy to share that. So it was a lot of fun. And, um, I feel really, really excited about what those 16 kids, uh, will do going forward. So just super great job, uh, Carrie and Chad. And thanks to the rest of you, Drew and Long and Matt would be in there. It was just, it was a lot of fun. Um, yes, the chamber launch, I thought the incubator that's chamber imagines is also really good for Clovis. So I think that's kind of interesting. We'll go with our culinary incubator. Uh, and again, thank you to Jerry, you for the award honoring your father and kind of calling out the things that do lead Clovis a little differently than other cities. So I think that is really, uh, notable. The only comment about George I would add that I thought was so telling in all the things is the mix of people in the, in church. Uh, I saw his 85-year-old retired social work profession in Fresno State. I saw his eighty-five-year-old retired social work professional from Fresno State, so that goes back a while. And I saw people that I presume probably encountered George as a youth along the way. And honestly, like, it was just such a great mix of humans to honor George. So that was, that was really pretty extraordinary. I want to thank Andy and Amy Hans and Nick Torstensen for going to the African American Museum dinner the other night. It was really great to be there to support Yohan Warham Clovis Unified, who was recognized for her work. So that was, that was great. What is that? I can't remember my handwriting. What does that say? Oh, I know. I went to something you didn't go to. This is so great. I went to the grand opening of Eureka, which was super great. Ordered dinner, went back and got it a half an hour later. But anyways, great to have that restaurant in Clovis. And I had talked to the folks who, I don't know if they, I can't remember now, it was a sale of that center, but the refurbishing of that shopping center, it is like transformed. So it was great to see that restaurant was packed. So that was, that was a lot of fun. And the Dr. Armstrong, I wanted to just, I meant to say this to you last time, talking to you. Hi. How are you? I saw you at the dinner, too. I think we have the same jacket, but that's why I didn't want to talk to you. We are meeting next week with the Clovis Unified School Board, which I think is great. And I just wondered someday if there would be a chance to meet with your school, your community college board to talk about things we share. And what we share as a city with community colleges work is workforce development. So there might be an opportunity to do that. It's been a great relationship with Clovis Unified. We have done, I think, wonderful work over the years because of that relationship. And I meant to say that last time when I forgot. So with you here, I just wanted to say it now. But it might be an opportunity that once a year, we could get together with the trustees to hear your programs, to hear your career ed programs, to put it with our workforce piece, with our economic development piece, I don't know what. But I just think it would be a really wonderful opportunity. Love to host that. Sure, write that down. Got it. Anyway, so that, there is that. And then finally, I just also want to take a moment to honor the passing of Karen Thompson. Karen is Mark Thompson's wife. And I think Mark is the voice of Clovis, the Clovis rodeo for a very long time. But there were five hundred people at the rodeo hall yesterday for her and for him. And again, you realize what a mark he's left on for her because it continues to leave on Clovis and the difference she made. She worked at the hospital. So anyway, it was really, it was, it was a really wonderful tribute, but I haven't seen that rodeo hall that for a long time. So anyway, that was wonderful. So if you, if you encounter Mark, give him a hug. And as his pastor said, don't wait for him to ask you. Don't wait for him to call you and say, could you help with this? Just reach out and help him. And I think that's great advice. Two pieces of business. On January seventeenth, FCT had a special session where we appointed the new executive director that will replace Mike Leonardo, his name is Terry Ogul. And he will be starting, I'm not sure, soon. So we did go through a selection process. And so he will replace Mike. He has a similar background than Mike. He's an engineer, Caltrans, high-speed rail, private sector engineer. So I think he'll bring some new thinking to transportation and will be faced with Measure C as one of his first projects. So I want to report that. And then the second item is on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, I went to COG. And the most exciting thing about COG is, was the conversation on the One Voice Trip. And I want to thank Nick and Ryan for being there. Oh, no, it wasn't you. It was Ryan. I thought it was pronounced, sorry. That, that, I get you guys confused. Ryan was there. So anyway, we pulled the two programs that Clovis had on that One Voice Trip because they, I think, by everybody's admission, they weren't quite ready. And we don't have a conference. So there's that. So I think the trip will proceed. I fully support the regional idea. The projects are not very strong, but it will, the trip will proceed and that will be fine. But we can take ours on another day. And then the final item is the, COG did appoint a state roster school committee to try to elevate that question across the county. It is on our school history agenda next week. And I will be the chair of that state roster school committee and will be the vice chair of the, Leo from here on. So the goal is to get every kid to walk to school in Fresno County without getting hit by a car because they don't have a sidewalk. And that should be a great minimum standard for what our community serves. So I think that concludes all of that. And with that, we will adjourn into a closed session. The item is pretty common on our agenda. It continues our housing discussion. And will we reconvene after open session and report back?
We will, but we are not asking for action that would be reportable tonight.
Okay.
But if there's any member wishing to make a public comment, now's the time to call the comment before we retire from this session.
If you want to comment on our ongoing housing question? We're getting close. All right, see you then. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We'll see you on the thirteenth of February at Clovis Unified.